All right, everybody is here. I'd like to roll call, please.
Viera.
Here.
Gudes.
Here.
Carlson.
Here.
Dingfelder.
Here.
Citro.
I'm here.
Miranda.
Here.
Maniscalco.
Here. All right, thank you very much. We now go to the approval of the agenda and the addendum. There is an item to come after item fifty... After item fifty-seven, requested by the legal department regarding K-Bar property. A memo was sent out. That will be added to the agenda. If there's no questions, may I have a motion to approve the agenda and the addendum? Councilman Mr. Shelby.
Yes. Yes, Mr. Chairman.
Tell me, don't tug on me.
A correction on the addendum. What you have in front of you is a... The listing of a memo from City Attorney Jan McLean relative to the Stormwater Capital Improvement Assessment Rule. That is not item twenty-four. That is item number fifty-nine. So that's misnumbered. And just to remind you that item fifty-nine, it's not a substitute reso. The reso that's on the agenda is the one that needs to be moved during the hearing. So other than that, we also have additional new business that we'll be able to take up at the end of the meeting. But a motion would be anywhere. Thank you.
Thank you very much. All right, do we have a motion to approve the agenda and the addendum?
Don't move it, Mr. Chairman.
We have a motion for Councilmember Miranda with a second from Councilmember Viera. Roll call vote.
Viera.
Yes.
Gudes. Carlson.
Yes.
Dingfelder.
Yes.
Citro.
Yes.
Miranda.
Yes.
Maniscalco.
Yes.
Motion carried with Councilmember Gudes absent at vote.
All right, request for the... or by the public for reconsideration of legislative matters. We've already gone through public comment and whatnot. Therefore, we begin with item number two, which is an ordinance for first reading. Whoever would like to take that and speak upon it, go ahead.
Good afternoon, Chair and Council. This is Vic B. A., Director of Mobility Department. Can you all hear me?
Yes, we can.
Great. So this is an item to really improve the process and access for the community members. It's a code amendment to section fifteen dash one-twenty-one G. And the gist is that for any person that seeks to contest a parking ticket, currently the required by code to furnish a driver's license and vehicle registration. And we're kind of expanding and creating more options because there are other types of identification out there. So upon the city attorney's office's approval, they will be able to submit things like military ID, utility bills, state ID, and things like that. And that amendment language is in your attachment. It's a single sentence that is being added, which includes four other documents acceptable to the city attorney's office. And Legal and I are here to address any concerns or questions.
All right, do we have any questions from any council members? Any questions from council members? All right, hearing or seeing none, actually. Who would like to read this ordinance? Councilman Citro, would you like to take this? Item number two.
Mr. Chairman, thank you very much. Yes, an ordinance being presented for first reading consideration. An ordinance of the City of Tampa, Florida relating to contesting parking tickets. Making revisions to the City of Tampa Code of Ordinances, Chapter Fifteen, Parking. Amending Article Two, Regulations, Permits, Penalties, Division Four, Penalties Enforcement, Section Fifteen dash one-twenty-one. In suance of parking tickets, payments or contesting tickets, penalties for parking violations resulting in parking division review. Repealing all ordinances or parts of ordinances in conflict. Therewith, providing for severability, providing an effective date.
Second. We have a motion from Councilmember Citro with a second from Councilmember Miranda. Please take roll vote.
Viera.
Yes.
Gudes. Carlson.
Yes.
Dingfelder.
Yes.
Citro.
Yes.
Miranda.
Yes.
Maniscalco.
Yes.
Motion carried with Councilmember Gudes being absent at vote. Second reading and adoption will be held on September third, two thousand twenty, at nine AM.
All right, thank you very much. We go to item number three. I believe Vic will also be speaking on this, our Director of Transportation in the Stormwaters. Department, go ahead, sir.
Thank you, Chair, and thank you, Council Vic B. A., Mobility Department Director again. So the background on this item is that on February sixth, two thousand twenty, council passed a motion to receive a staff report at its March fifth meeting regarding expanding the authority of city code enforcement officers to address and pick at parking items. Now, the goal of this change that we're proposing and it's a code amendment to chapters fifteen and nineteen is to have code enforcement officers respond to parking concerns. This will increase our throughput in order to be able to address parking challenges in our neighborhoods. And these amendments facilitate a thing. And to clarify how they will respond to these... Currently, code enforcement officers do patrol different zones and their allocated zones. So we'll be able to have a regular observation and action on parking-related items. When it comes to specific problem areas with parking, typically it's a combination of either code or law enforcement that respond to these issues. But again, the goal is to increase throughput and provide a better service to the city.
Mr. Chair, I'm happy to make the motion.
All right, we have a motion. Mr. Chair, for the order?
Councilmember.
I got knocked out, so I'm not sure which item we're on. Is this number two still or number three?
Item number three.
Number three, okay. You can proceed with the chair, but after this, I would like to go back to number two, just to make a comment. I know the vote has been taken, but I would like to make a comment for the record.
Yes, sir, go ahead.
On item number two, I want to thank the legal department's grimes for addressing this issue. This was the issue with the constituents or reference these IDs requesting Florida IDs as a reference of identification. And I'm glad the legal department was able to research that, to come up with a better way and a better system for our constituents who may not have a form of identification, may not want to use their Florida ID to identify as far as our policy will. So I'm glad that policy changed. I understand the vote was taken. I don't know if it passed or not, so if you can clarify it for me, sir.
It did. It was a unanimous... Well, it passed with no opposition on item number two.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, thank you.
Any other questions or comments?
No, sir, you're back on that.
All right, I know Councilman Carlson did make a motion, but this came up when it came up. Because we do get complaints from constituents how vehicles are parked in the neighborhood and whatnot, and other issues that... You know, not to burden the police department, but we're expanding the authority of the code enforcement officers that are always driving around the neighborhoods. And it offers a better balance and an extra set of eyes, an extra authority that's needed to keep some of our neighborhoods in better order. Because again, we do get these complaints. So we have a motion from Councilman Carlson, second from Councilmember Miranda. Roll call vote.
We got a...
Viera.
Oh, yes.
You have to read the ordinance.
Yes.
Oh, oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Councilman Carlson, would you like to go ahead and read the ordinance?
Sure. Thank you, Mr. Chair. File numbers E-two-zero-two-zero dash eight, Chapter Fifteen, and E-two thousand twenty-eight, Chapter Nineteen. Ordinance being presented for first reading consideration ordinance to the City of Tampa, Florida relating to the scope of authority of the city's code enforcement and duties of code enforcement officers making revisions to the City of Tampa Code of Ordinances, Chapter Nineteen, Property Maintenance and Cultural Standards. Article one and general, Division one, General Provisions Administrative Authority, Section Nineteen dash four, Department of Code Enforcement Duties and Scope of Authority of the Director by expanding the powers, duties, and responsibilities of the Code Enforcement Director and their code enforcement officers to administer and enforce City Code, Chapter Fifteen, Parking, Section Fifteen dash three, Fifteen dash fifty-four, and Fifteen dash one-twenty-two to define duly authorized enforcement officer and authorized same to enforce Chapter Sixteen provisions, repealing all ordinances or parts of ordinances in conflict therewith, providing for severability, providing effective date.
All right, we have a motion from Councilman Carlson. Councilmember Miranda did second it. Roll call vote.
Viera.
Yes.
Gudes.
Yes.
Carlson.
Yes.
Dingfelder. Citro.
Yes.
Miranda.
Yes.
Maniscalco.
Yes.
Motion carried with Councilmember Dingfelder being absent at vote. Second reading and adoption will be held on September third, two thousand twenty, at nine AM.
Mr. Chair, comment or thought? I just want to thank the legal department and others, and Chief Bennett in particular, for moving this forward. This has been a big concern of constituents all over the city, but in particular in South Tampa and the historic Hyde Park area and Davis Islands and others. And so this is a way of trying to alleviate the parking problems without having to rely on the police. Thank you.
Thank you very much. We now go to our Public Safety Committee, which is chaired by Councilmember Citro. If you'd like to go ahead and take that, sir.
Yes, thank you very much, Mr. Chair. I move items four through nine.
All right, we have a motion from Councilman Citro, second from Councilmember Miranda. Roll call vote.
Viera.
Yes.
Gudes.
Yes.
Carlson.
Yes.
Dingfelder. Citro.
Yes.
Miranda.
Yes.
Maniscalco.
Yes. All right, next up. All right, next up, we have Parks, Rec, and Cultural Committee with Councilmember Gudes as chair. If you take those items.
Yes, Mr. Chair, I move items number ten, number thirteen, sir.
All right, we have a motion from Councilmember Gudes, second from Councilmember Miranda. Roll call vote.
Grant, excuse me, Viera.
Yes.
Goo.
Yes.
Carlson.
Yes.
Dingfelder. Citro.
Yes.
Miranda.
Yes.
Maniscalco.
Yes. All right, next up is Public Works, Councilmember.
Dingfelder being absent at vote.
Thank you very much. Councilmember Dingfelder is no longer with us on the meeting, so we go to Councilmember Carlson if you'd like to take these items fourteen through twenty-three.
Sure, I'd like to move items fourteen to twenty-three.
Second. Second.
We have a motion from Councilman Carlson, second from Councilmember Gudes. Roll call vote.
Viera.
Yes.
Gudes.
Yes.
Carlson.
Yes.
Dingfelder. Citro.
Yes.
Miranda.
Yes.
Maniscalco.
Yes.
Motion carried with Councilmember Dingfelder being absent at vote.
All right, thank you very much. Next up, we have the Finance Committee with Councilmember Miranda. If you'd like to take those items.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Move items twenty-four through thirty-five. Second.
All right, we have a motion from Councilmember Miranda, second from Councilmember Citro. Roll call vote.
Viera.
Yes.
Goo.
Yes.
Carlson.
Yes.
Dingfelder. Citro.
Yes.
Miranda.
Yes.
Maniscalco.
Yes.
Motion carried with Councilmember Dingfelder being absent at vote.
All right, thank you very much. And I did... I mentioned it briefly before we continue, but Councilmember Dingfelder did have to leave the meeting. I just want to announce that he will be rejoining us this evening for evening meeting. All right, next up, we have... Where did we leave off? Councilmember Carlson.
Yes, I'd like to move items thirty-six through fifty-three.
We have a motion from Councilmember Carlson with a second from Councilmember Miranda. If we could have a roll call vote.
Viera.
Yes.
Gudes.
Yes.
Carlson.
Yes.
Dingfelder. Citro.
Yes.
Miranda.
Yes.
Maniscalco.
Yes.
Motion carried with Councilmember Dingfelder being absent at vote.
All right, thank you very much. Next up is the Transportation Committee with Councilmember Louis Viera, if you would take her.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I hereby move items fifty-four, fifty-five, and fifty-six.
All right, we have a motion from Councilmember Viera with a second from Councilmember Miranda. Roll call vote.
Viera.
Yes.
Gudes.
Yes.
Carlson.
Yes.
Dingfelder. Citro.
Yes.
Miranda.
Yes.
Maniscalco.
Yes.
Motion carried with Councilmember Gudes, excuse me, Councilmember Dingfelder being absent at vote.
Thank you very much. Item number fifty-seven is a petition for review that needs to be scheduled for September twenty-first at five oh one PM.
Move that item, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Mr. Chairman, may I be heard on that item, please?
Mr. Shelby.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. That was originally the request September twenty-first for the clerk to set the review hearing. However, I have had the opportunity to review with staff the scheduling for September twenty-first. That is quite full and not appropriate to set any additional hearings. So therefore, we are requesting that that be scheduled for October twenty-second of two thousand twenty.
Chairman, move item fifty-seven for the review of hearing to be scheduled on October twenty-second, the year two thousand twenty, at five... What is that, five oh one or six?
Five oh one, thank you.
Five oh one.
We have a motion from Councilmember Miranda for item fifty-seven with a second from Councilmember Gudes. Roll call vote.
Viera.
Yes.
Gudes.
Yes.
Carlson.
Yes.
Dingfelder. Citro.
Yes.
Miranda.
Yes.
Maniscalco.
Yes.
Motion carried with Councilmember Dingfelder being absent at vote.
Chairman, move open items fifty-eight through sixty-one.
All right, we have a motion from Councilmember Miranda with a second from Councilman Citro. Roll call.
Viera.
Yes.
Gudes.
Yes.
Carlson.
Yes.
Dingfelder. Citro.
Yes.
Miranda.
Yes.
Maniscalco.
Yes.
Motion carried with Councilmember Dingfelder being absent at vote.
Okay, yes, sir, we have the K-Bar issue, yes, sir.
Yes, that's correct. I just wanted to make sure that was resolved. I believe Ms...
We approved it during the addendum and agenda.
No, you did not, sir. No, you did not. When you approve the addendum, you approve putting it on the agenda, but you don't approve the items that are listed on the addendum.
Oh, no, no, I know. And I'm saying that I approved it to be included in today's agenda for item... after item number fifty-seven.
Thank you, yes.
Yep. All right, so who from the legal department is here to speak on this item that they requested to put on?
Excuse me, this is Jan McLean. So you have the items open for item fifty-eight through sixty-one. Are you going to be taking a different item, Mr. Shelby, once you have these public hearings open? It's okay. I just want to make it clear that you're taking something different than item fifty-eight through sixty-one.
That's true. I guess it can be held till after we do this if you want to have a clean record. Is that what you prefer, Mr. McLean?
I just... That's what I would prefer since the hearings were open for those four items. Or, you know.
Mr. Chairman, then why don't we hold that, if you can, with the council's indulgence, if we can hold these until after we conduct the public hearings?
Okay, then we'll go to item number fifty-eight, and then we'll come back to the K-Bar item that the legal department had requested. Item number fifty-eight.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chair and members of council. What we have in front of you today in item number fifty-eight is the adoption of the annual Stormwater Service Assessment Rule. May I remind you that now that the hearing is open, that you have your... take your public comment. And from anyone who wishes to make that comment, that you take your vote while the hearing is open and then close the hearing. I don't know if we have anybody who's registered to speak.
I believe we do have someone at the convention center that is registered to speak for this item, item number fifty-eight.
Yes, hi, Chair. We do have one person at the convention center that would like to speak, and I have them up so they could go ahead.
All right, if you are here to speak on item number fifty-eight, please state your name for the record, and you have three minutes to speak.
My name... My name is Larry Huntley. I live at forty-seven twenty-two West Wisconsin Avenue. I'm here to speak against the Stormwater assessments and hope the council will hold it. At this time with the pandemic and unrest, most places are trying to give us a discount on things and aren't as less. Even insurance companies on cars. The Stormwater wants to take more money from the City of Tampa residents trying to do something that they will never get right. They can't fix this flooding. They tried it a minimum of three times that I know on a quarter of Henderson, Dale, Mabry, and have never succeeded. They have a budget of fourteen million dollars. That's got to be one of the largest budgets there is in the city. And I will be putting in... This year, I'll be putting in a hundred and forty... Hundred and forty-seven dollars eighty-three cents to this Stormwater. And I won't get one penny for it. It'd just be lost money. As many... And there are many other city residents that are going to be doing the same thing as I. They won't ever get any benefit out of it at all, no. I'm sorry, I'm kind of nervous. You know, yeah. Tampa is a wonderful place. We've got really good weather here, and that's why a lot of people move here. Only thing is with the weather, we also have some hazards. We get heavy rains, and we get high tides. When we have high tide and heavy rain, this water is going to collect in lower areas in the road, and we have to live with it. But let's start living with it and forget all this fiasco with this Stormwater thing. I was against it when it first started. I think it was the year two thousand or two thousand and one, something like that. And I was against it then, and I still am. It's nothing but costing me a bunch of money every year. When I first wanted to come down to this, when I got these letters, I called up these people at the Stormwater place, and they were really trying to discourage me from coming into this meeting and speaking. And they said the only way I could do it, if I had email. I don't have any. I try to leave a private life. So I'm hoping to see... I finally went to Councilman Dingfelder's office, and his assistant is the one that found out that I could come down here and speak on it. I'm sorry, I'm so nervous. That's the way it is.
No worries.
But anyway, I hope the city council will see my way and vote against this adoption, because all they're doing is taking a bunch of money, and they can't fix this.
Thank you very much, sir. All right, is there anyone for... Anyone else for public comment on this issue?
There was no one else present for public comment.
All right, any discussion from council members? Any questions or comments?
And again, Mr. Chairman, I'm sorry, it's Martin Shelby. Just for the purposes of the virtual meeting, if you could just announce that item number again and the subject.
Yes, sir, this is the annual Stormwater Service Assessment, item number fifty-eight. Item number fifty-eight. Is anyone from Legal, Jan McLean, any questions or comments at this point?
No, sir. It's a pleasure of the council if there is any questions from them. Otherwise, the vote is to be taken while the hearing is open, please.
All right, any questions or comments? Would anybody like to move this resolution, item number fifty-eight?
Chairman, move resolution number fifty-eight from twenty twenty-eight, Chapter Twenty-One.
Second.
We have a motion from Councilmember Miranda with a second from Councilmember Viera. Roll call vote.
Viera.
Yes.
Gudes.
Yes.
Carlson.
Yes.
Dingfelder. Citro.
Citro.
Yes.
Miranda.
Yes.
Maniscalco.
Yes.
Motion carried with Councilmember Dingfelder being absent at vote.
Thank you very much. Mr. Shelby, I do not have to close out this public hearing for this item, do I?
Yes, yes, you do, sir.
All right, may I have a motion to close the public hearing?
Number fifty-eight, Mr. Chairman.
Second. Motion from Councilmember Miranda, second from Councilmember Gudes. Roll call vote.
Viera.
Yes.
Goo.
Yes.
Carlson.
Yes.
Dingfelder. Citro.
Yes.
Miranda.
Yes.
Maniscalco.
Yes.
Motion carried with Councilmember Dingfelder being absent at vote.
All right, since we do have all these public hearings open, item number fifty-nine, fifty-nine, Jan McLean.
Thank you, Chair. Mr. Chair, this is item number fifty-nine, and as you indicated, this hearing has been opened. This is the resolution to adopt the annual assessment rule for the Stormwater Capital Improvement Assessment. And as indicated previously, I've submitted a memo with two pieces of correspondence making comment and objection to this particular assessment. Make them part of the record, please, with the approval of the addendum. Again, I don't know if anyone is registered to speak on this particular item.
Clerk, do we have any speakers on item number fifty-nine?
No, sir, we did not receive any registrations to speak, nor if anyone else at the Tampa Convention Center.
Are there any questions from council members for item number fifty-nine? Hearing and seeing...
Chairman, if I can?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. With that request from the legal staff, I would ask that you do make a motion to receive and file those documents and make them part of this hearing.
Yes, sir. May I have a motion before we take a vote to follow? Yes, sir. May I have a motion before we take a vote to follow me?
Document number fifty-nine.
Miranda, second council member Goos. Roll call vote.
Vera.
Yes.
Goos.
Yes.
Carlson.
Yes.
Citro.
Yes.
Dean Felder. Miranda.
Yeah.
Maniscalco.
Yes.
Motion carried with council member Dean Felder being absent at vote.
All right, may I have a motion to, uh, who would like to read this resolution?
This has to be moved.
Or move the resolution.
Chairman, I approve of resolution and number fifty-nine, E twenty-twenty dash eight, chapter twenty-one, resolution on the number fifty-nine.
Second.
We have a motion from council member Miranda, second from council member Vera. Roll call vote.
Vera.
Yes.
Goos.
Yes.
Carlson.
Yes.
Dean Felder. Citro.
Yes.
Miranda.
Yes.
Maniscalco.
Yes.
Motion carried with council member Dean Felder being absent at vote.
Thank you very much.
Fifty-nine, Mr. Chairman.
We have a motion closed by councilman Miranda, second from council member Goos. Roll call vote.
Vera.
Yes.
Carlson.
Yes.
Goos.
Yes.
Dean Felder. Citro.
Yes.
Miranda.
Yes.
Maniscalco.
Yes.
Motion carried with council member Dean Felder being absent at vote.
All right, thank you very much. Item number sixty, item number sixty. Who would like to speak on this?
Um, thank you, Mr. Chair. This is Jam McLean, Office of City Attorney again. Uh, we are here today for the annual um adoption of the non-advalorm assessment role for the downtown and Ebor City areas of the city of Tampa for the purpose of paying a portion of the operating costs for the Tampa-Ebor historic streetcar project. Um, where this is uh the same uh procedure as we have just done with the stormwater assessment. Take comment. I do have, um, Mr. Michael English, who is the president of the Board of Directors for Tampa's Stores uh streetcar, who may, may want to make a comment. Um, he's on the line.
Okay.
Thank you.
Mr. English, go ahead.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman and council members. Um, I can be very brief. You had already had a busy day. Um, this is an annual um appearance for your support to extend our special assessment district. As you know, it counts for over thirty percent of our budget, so it's, it's critical. And um, we would hope to continue to have your support. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Do we have any other public uh speakers uh for this item? All right, hearing none, seeing none. Uh, may I have a, uh, someone move this resolution?
Chairman, move number sixty, file number E twenty-twenty dash eight, chapter twenty-four, move the resolution.
Second.
We have motion from council member Miranda, second from council member Goos. Roll call vote.
Vera.
Yes.
Goos.
Yes.
Carlson.
Yes.
Dean Felder. Citro.
If you can hear me, yes.
Miranda.
Yes.
Maniscalco.
Yes.
Motion carried with council member Dean Felder being absent at vote.
Move to close number sixty, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you very much. Move, motion to close with councilman Miranda. We have a second. Second, council member Goos. Roll call vote.
Vera.
Yes.
Goos.
Yes.
Carlson.
Yes.
Dean Felder. Citro.
Yes.
Miranda.
Yes.
Maniscalco.
Yes.
Motion carried with council member Dean Felder being absent at vote.
All right, we have item number sixty-one, sixty-one. Go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Jam McLean with the Office of the City Attorney again. We are here um today on to, for the adoption of the non-advalorm assessment role for the West Shore area of the city of Tampa for the purpose of paying for the provision of certain enhanced services in said area. Um, again, this is the same uh process as the three previous uh non-advalorm assessments. And I have Ms. Ann Coolig, who is the executive director of the West Shore Alliance, um, who would like to make a few comments and she is on the line.
Thank you very much. Go ahead, Ann.
Thank you, Chairman Maniscalco. Um, I'll be brief, everyone. Again, I just wanted to remind you uh that this special assessment has been in place since two thousand and two. It is assessed on commercial property owners only. Uh, and the assessment rate has actually uh been reduced this year. Last year it was fifteen cents per thousand assessed. This year is thirteen point eight cents per thousand assessed. Uh, we did hold a public information meeting and a workshop last week and invited all affected property owners. Had several attend with no objections. So with that said, I will thank you again for your time and respectfully request that you approve this item and the subsequent agreement with the Alliance for Provision of Services. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Thank you. Do we have any other public speakers on this item?
Mr. Chair, this is Jam McLean again. I, um, thank you, Ms. Coolig. I wanted to make sure that uh council recognized that there are two items that need to be approved under this assessment. The resolution adopting the non-advalorm assessment role and the resolution approving the special assessment services agreement. So two votes.
All right, we'll, we'll take them up separately then. May I have a motion to adopt the resolution or move the resolution for the non-advalorm assessment role, uh, either the first part. We have a motion from councilman Goos. Do we have a second?
Second.
Miranda, roll call vote.
Vera.
Yes.
Goos.
Yes.
Carlson.
Yes.
Dean Felder. Citro.
Yes.
Miranda.
Yes.
Maniscalco.
Yes.
Motion carried with council member Dean Felder being absent at vote.
Okay, next we have the second.
Move to close, move to close number, number sixty-one, the first part, the non-advalorm.
No, 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 I, should we wait until it's completed, all, all of sixty-one before we close?
Yes, yes, sir. We need to make both votes.
Okay, if we can get a motion to uh to move this resolution for the special assessment services agreement for the, uh, for West Shore, we get a motion for that. We have a motion from councilman Miranda, second from council member Goos. Roll call vote.
Vera.
Yes.
Goos.
Yes.
Carlson.
Yes.
Dean Felder. Citro.
Yes.
Miranda.
Yes.
Maniscalco.
Yes.
Motion carried with council member Dean Felder being absent at vote.
Thank you, Chairman.
Yes.
And Carlson.
Just a, just a philosophical comment. You all know that I am against the um continuing the downtown and Channel District CRAs and will continue on that mantra. Um, I think that this model of where an area can tax itself is a much better model because then the money that's collected is their money. They're collecting it in their area and they're voting to uh to increase in the, as opposed to areas that where the rest of the city and in particular South Tampa subsidizing like downtown and Channel Side. Um, I hope that eventually, uh, Channel Side will move to a model like this. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Any other comments or questions before we close this hearing?
Mr. Chairman, move item to close sixty-one, chapter, as file number E twenty-twenty dash eight, chapter twenty-four, the non-advalorm part. And then the assessment of ad-valorm assessment.
Second.
All right, we have motion to close this hearing from uh, from councilman Miranda with the second council member Goos. Roll call vote.
Vera.
Yes.
Goos.
Yes.
Carlson.
Yes.
Dean Felder. Citro.
Yes.
Miranda.
Yes.
Maniscalco.
Yes.
Motion carried with council member Dean Felder being absent at vote.
All right, um, Ms. McLean, would you like to bring up that item that, um, that legal requested that we were to take after item fifty-seven? Would you like to take it at this time?
Mr. Chairman, I'm happy to do that.
Oh, Mr. Shelby, go ahead.
Yes, counsel, this is uh based on a memorandum from Assistant City Attorney Susan Johnson Velez. Um, basically what you have is a resolution setting a public hearing for um a non-advalorm assessment for K-Bar Ranch Parcels ENF. All you have to do is move the resolution.
Okay. Do we need to move the resolution, sir?
You just have to move the resolution.
Okay, all right, can we get a motion to um to move this resolution?
Motion move.
Wait, councilman Miranda.
No, no, I would say, does it have, does it have a number?
No, it hasn't been assigned yet. I believe, uh, this is, this would, this would normally appear under that consent item called, um, setting public hearings, items being set for public hearings by consent.
No problem.
Okay, who wanted to move this? Council member Goos?
I'll move it.
All right, with a motion from council member Goos, second council member Miranda to move this resolution. Roll call vote.
Vera.
Yes.
Goos.
Yes.
Carlson.
Yes.
Dean Felder. Citro.
Yes.
Miranda.
Yes.
Maniscalco.
Yes.
Motion carried with council member Dean Felder being absent at vote.
All right, thank you very much. Next we have items sixty-two through sixty-six. If we can get a motion.
Sixty-two through sixty-six.
Second.
Motion from councilman Miranda, second from council member Citro. Roll call vote.
Vera.
Yes.
Goos.
Yes.
Carlson.
Yes.
Dean Felder. Citro.
Yes.
Miranda.
Yes.
Maniscalco.
Yes.
Motion carried with council member Dean Felder being absent at vote.
Thank you very much. Yes, sir, go ahead.
Uh, these items require housekeeping, I believe, uh, Ron Wigginton from State Department. Uh, there are, yes, if maybe, um, we can have legal come in and ask council for, um, uh, action on these. Is he present?
Is anyone from legal present on items sixty-two and three? I believe they wish to be pulled or discussed. Um, anyone from legal on these items?
I believe the memorandum asks that they be removed from the agenda and be rescheduled and re-noticed of sixty-two, sixty-three and sixty-four.
All right, if we can get a motion to, uh, pull those, that's what I've written here. Um, if we can have a motion to pull sixty-two, three and four and then they will be re-noticed and of course come back at a future date. If we can get a motion to that effect.
Mr. Chairman, motion remove sixty-two, sixty-three and sixty-four from the agenda.
All right.
Mr. Chairman, can we hold that for a minute?
Yes, sir.
Um, Ms. Lucas, I believe legal department is muted. I don't know if they, if it's muted by the administrator.
Legal, can you hear us?
Try now. This is Andrea. Can you hear us now?
Yes, we can. Uh, would you like to comment on these items?
Thank you. Um, some of them, um, have, will not be being rescheduled today. For instance, number sixty-two, sixty-three, um, should not be rescheduled today. Our office is working with the applicant. Um, but sixty-four, sixty-five and sixty-six can be rescheduled as you put on the agenda.
So for clarification on the motion, if it's, it's, it's just items sixty-two and sixty-three that they be pulled and then of course uh, re-notice and it'll come back at a future date that we don't know. Um, can we have a motion to that? Councilman Goos, I know you made the motion, but it's sixty-two and sixty-three, not sixty-four.
Second.
All right, we have a motion from councilman Goos. Yes, sir. Are you good, councilman Goos?
No, I'm good. Yes, I'm good.
Okay, we have a motion from councilman Goos, second from, uh, councilman Miranda. Roll call vote for sixty-two and sixty-three.
Vera.
Yes.
Goos.
Yes.
Carlson.
Yes.
Dean Felder. Citro.
Yes.
Miranda.
Yes.
Maniscalco.
Yes.
Motion carried with council member Dean Felder being absent at vote.
All right, we now go to item sixty-four and this is to be moved to September tenth. Mr. Shelby, does that September tenth date at six P.M. still stand?
As I recall, uh, I had an opportunity to review these. I believe these dates, um, may have been previously set when city council did their rescheduling on the twenty-third of July. If anybody from the legal department can confirm that or correct me if I'm wrong.
Legal department.
No, that's correct. That's correct, Mr. Shelby. This is Andrea Selman. Ron, did you have anything to add?
Uh, no, that's it. Uh, it hasn't been noticed yet, but it will be for the September tenth, uh, city council agenda.
All right, thank you very much. If I may have a motion at this time for item number sixty-four that a public hearing be moved to September tenth, twenty-twenty at six P.M. Do I have a motion?
Pardon me, city council. This is Ron Wigginton of the legal department. Uh, there is a take at the time. Uh, it should be five o'clock instead of six, please.
Yes, sir. We will change that then. So may I have a motion to move item sixty-four to September tenth, twenty-twenty at five P.M.?
Five oh one.
Chairman, move item sixty-four, V A C twenty dash twelve through September tenth, twenty-twenty at five oh one P.M.
Second.
All right, we have a motion from council member Miranda, second from council member Goos. Roll call vote.
Vera.
Yes.
Goos.
Yes.
Carlson.
Yes.
Dean Felder. Citro.
Yes.
Miranda.
Yes.
Maniscalco.
Yes.
Motion carried with council member Dean Felder being absent at vote.
All righty, item number sixty-five, uh, needs to be rescheduled to September twenty-first at five oh one P.M. May I have a motion to that effect?
Chairman.
Councilman Citro.
Mr. Chair, file number E twenty-twenty dash eight, uh, chapter twenty-seven, I move that we, uh, move, reschedule that to September twenty-first, twenty-twenty at five oh one P.M.
Second.
We have a motion from councilman Citro with a second from council member Miranda. Roll call vote.
Vera.
Yes.
Goos.
Yes.
Carlson.
Yes.
Dean Felder. Citro.
Yes.
Miranda.
Yes.
Maniscalco.
Yes.
Motion carried with council member Dean Felder being absent at vote.
All righty, item number sixty-six, also is to be rescheduled to September twenty-first, twenty-twenty at five oh one P.M. May I have a motion to that effect?
Chairman, item sixty-six, file number twenty, E twenty-twenty dash eight, that's chapter twenty-seven. Move to reschedule September twenty-first, twenty-twenty at five oh one P.M.
Second.
We have a motion from council member Miranda, second from council member Goos. Roll call vote.
Vera.
Yes.
Goos.
Yes.
Carlson.
Yes.
Dean Felder. Citro.
Yes.
Miranda.
Yes.
Maniscalco.
Yes.
Motion carried with council member Dean Felder being absent at vote.
All right, we move to item number sixty-seven. We have a memo from Mr. Spearman. Are there any questions or is there anyone here to speak on this eight point three million dollar item, item number sixty-seven?
Good afternoon, Chairman John Bennett, Chief of Staff. Um, we're hoping the memo which suffice, it was only moved to staff reports due to the dollar amount. But as you notice, uh, the increase is based on four hundred thousand dollars, so it was issued for transparency and followed up by a memo from Mr. Spearman. If there's any other questions, I will see if he's available.
All right, are there any questions from council members? Hearing none, seeing none. May I have a mo, a motion to move it?
Mr. Chairman, this, uh, item sixty-seven, twenty-twenty dash four oh five, sooner or later under this guidance of Mayor Castor, Mr. Bennett and Mr. Whitremer, the, some of these file numbers will really go down the next four or five years when electric trucks, they go five to seven hundred miles. There'll be a lot of things going on in the city that we've never seen before and I'm looking forward to that. I move, uh, number sixty-seven, Mr. Chairman.
Second.
We have a motion from council member Miranda and a second from council member Goos, writing number sixty-seven. May I have a roll call vote?
Vera.
Yes.
Goos.
Yes.
Carlson.
Yes.
Dean Felder. Citro.
And I am in total agreement with councilman Miranda, yes.
Miranda.
Yes.
Maniscalco.
Yes.
Motion carried with council member Dean Felder being absent at vote.
All right, item number sixty-eight.
Give me the move, Chairman.
Uh, we have a PowerPoint presentation here, uh, report from staff. Item number sixty-eight, who from staff is here? This would be from, uh, Water and Waste Water.
Hello, uh, Chair, City Council, can you hear me?
Yes, sir. Go ahead, Mr. Bear.
Uh, this is Brad Bear, Deputy Administrator of Infrastructure. Um, and, uh, pleased to provide this presentation on water and wastewater capacity, uh, fees. Proposal, it's an informational presentation with no action required.
Next slide, please. If you recall, we conducted a rate and fee study for water and wastewater. It was three parts. It had consumption rates as part one, the base charge consideration is, is item two, and then the third part of it was a study with regard to impact fees. And this, this third part, or review of the impact fees, had not been looked at nineteen eighty-seven. This part of the study was completed last fall after approval of the pipes program, if you'll recall. As part of this study, the actual cost to design and construct the transmission and treatment facilities is determined, which is then divided by the number of equivalent residential connections to provide the current cost per E R C that you see in front of you on this slide. Next slide, please. So this, this slide compares the actual cost per E R C, shipping on the last slide, to the current impact fees. For water, the fees increase for the CAC areas, and then a new fee is created in service areas other than the CAC areas to pay for transmission and treatment costs associated with the system capacity. And then for wastewater, for a single E R C or for a single-family residential, the fees would actually go down to match the actual cost. Next slide, please. These maps, the map on the left shows the, the boundaries of the existing contribution and aid of construction over CAC areas for the water department. The area in green is the South Tampa CAC, and then the area in pink is considered the Northeast CAC area. And then the, the area shown in, in blue does not currently have an impact fee associated with it, but it is it is the remainder of the city, or remainder of the service area, excuse me. And then the map on the right shows the seven capacity fee districts for the wastewater department. And since the amounts of the fees are very close, our consultant, Rap Telus, is recommending that we simplify that fee into one capacity fee of twelve-hundred-and-thirty-seven dollars per E R C, which again is a reduction for a single-family resident. Next slide, please. So we actually postponed this presentation to receive feedback from the development community, if you'll remember. We actually postponed it twice because of COVID, but we held two public meetings, one in March and one in June. And this, this is the feedback that we received from the development community and, and the public. And the first, first issue that was raised, actually in, in the first meeting, was have reduced fees or provide a break for affordable housing. Then the second item is, was discussed as well, which was to record the fees on the property so that homeowners could pay over time and that developers wouldn't have to include that upfront in their package. Then the, the third item, they asked us to revisit the sunsetting of the CAC fees, which our Revenue and Finance Department did that. They took a look at that. Then next, and this was a big one, they wanted the notice to be more than the ninety minimum required by law for the, for the water impact fees. And then lastly, they asked us if we would consider phasing in the fees over time in consideration of other fees they have to pay in the county. Next slide, please. So I don't know if Mike Barry was able to stay on. He had a conflict. Mike, are you on? Hearing nothing, I'll go ahead. He was going to present these next three slides, but I'll go ahead and, and present. In taking the, the feedback from the development community, we looked at three options for implementation of the capacity fees. I know there are a lot of numbers on the spreadsheet, but you can view this presentation later in more detail if you would like. But all three options phase in the fees as requested by the development community. This, this option implements a wastewater fee reduction for most developments. It, it, the fee is reduced, but some, there are some developments with, with the old methodology under the meter will, would have to pay more. But anyway, the option implements wastewater fee reduction after ninety days' notice. It phases in the water department increase over three years at sixty percent, seventy percent, and eighty percent of the recommended fee amounts to cover actual costs. And this is not uncommon for municipalities to implement fees less than the amount to cover the costs associated with growth. The problem, however, with this option is that growth would not be paying a hundred percent of its own way. Next slide, please. And option two implements a wastewater fee reduction again after ninety days' notice and phases in the water department increase over three years at sixty percent, eighty percent, and a hundred percent of the recommended fee amounts to cover actual costs. And those are phased in actually of, of starting March of next year, and then again in March in twenty-twenty-two, and then March of twenty-twenty-three, as you see on the chart there. So it's, it's, again, we're phasing in the water fee as, or at least this option proposes to phase in the fees as requested by the development community. Next slide, please. So this option again implements the wastewater fee reduction after ninety days of notice and phases in the water department increase over five years at sixty percent, seventy percent, eighty percent, ninety percent, and a hundred percent of the recommended fee amounts to cover actual costs. And so as you can see, in those last two options, growth would ultimately pay its own way. Next slide, please. So to address the affordable housing issue, we, or as you, and as you saw in the feedback from the development community, you know, they asked as a minimum to have a reduction in water and wastewater capacity fees associated with affordable housing. Well, here is a relatively new Florida statute that allows for an exception or waiver of impact fees without requiring the municipality to, to make it up from their revenue sources. So keeping, in keeping with the mayor's Housing Affordability Initiative, we are recommending that the fees be waived for housing that falls under the state's definition of affordable. And here's the definition of affordable in the state statute. So there is no ambiguity as to what qualifies and what doesn't. And correction to my previous statement there. I said be waived, but we, we will recommend, as you'll see in the next slide, to set the fee at zero dollars. Next slide, please. So our recommendations are listed here. Our first recommendation is to proceed with option two, and that's to phase in the fees at sixty percent, eighty percent, and a hundred percent over three years. Issue a notice on August twenty-first with the new water fee starting March first of twenty-twenty-one, which provides a hundred-and-ninety-two days' notice, which is another request from the development community. Then make the wastewater capacity fee effective ninety days after adoption, because for the most part, it, it does include a, a reduction, so we want to, want to get that out there as fast as we can. Then the fees to be paid at the time of permit application rather than what we do with the CAC fees, the fifty-fifty approach. And however, that will still be available for the CAC. It still remains an option for the CAC fees. And then we'll set, as I said a minute ago, we'll set the Affordable Housing Capacity Fee equal to zero. And then finally, we'll update this capacity fee study every five years. Next slide, please. And finally, this is my last slide before Q and A. This is the schedule that we set forth. Presentation, of course, is today. Public notice, to be totally transparent, we're not required to notice this, but to be totally transparent, we would put an ad in the paper on August twenty-first that there will be a first reading and a second reading for the ordinance changes to, to affect these changes. And the first reading would be September third, and the second reading, September seventeenth. Then the wastewater capacity fee would be, become effective on December sixteenth or ninety days after the second reading. And then the following March, that are the phase-in of the water capacity fee. And then we would also, as part of cleanup in the, in the ordinance, we would sunset the grandfathered wastewater capacity fees. And that concludes my presentation, and I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you very much, Mr. Baird. Are there any questions from council members at this time?
I have a, Mr. Baird.
Go ahead, sir.
On the August twenty-first, I'm looking at the calendar. I don't know what newspaper they're going to use, because now the big daily newspaper only advertises on Wednesdays and Sundays, and the others that we have are also weekly or bi-weekly. So I, I would like to see the, the administration come with a better concrete as to make sure that that public notice is suffice for the September third hearing, which is the first hearing of this ordinance.
Okay. Yeah, thank you. That, thank you for pointing that out. That's a very good point. You, we only have paper copies on Wednesday and Sunday for, for the main paper. Okay. We'll take that into consideration. Thank you for that.
Thank you very much. Any other council members with any questions? No, seeing none. Thank you very much, Mr. Baird.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Thank you. Item number sixty-eight. We now go to item number sixty-nine regarding the Chief Diversity Officer for the City of Tampa. And who would like to take this? Is it our Chief of Staff that takes this, or who does it speak?
Afternoon, Chairman and Council and Public. John Bennett, Chief of Staff, joined by Kelly Austin, our Human Resources Director, and we will speak to item number sixty-nine. Before I get started, I just want to make sure, I think I know the answer. With the absence of Councilman Ding Felder, a second motion, I just wanted to make sure at the pleasure of the Chairman and Council, and, and Councilman Goode's is also the maker of the motion that you want me to continue with Mr. Ding Felder's absence.
Councilmember Goode, do you have any questions or comments? Would you like to continue this? Would you like to go ahead with this? How do you wish to proceed, sir?
No, let, let the chief go and proceed with his presentation.
All right. Go ahead, Chief Bennett.
Thank you, Chairman. Thank you, Councilman Goode. Just for the, since we are virtual, I just want to restate the motion before I make any comments. Item number sixty-nine was for the administration to employ a Chief Diversity Officer for the City of Tampa who will answer directly to the mayor and will be included in the upcoming budget. And again, motion initiated by Councilman Goode, seconded by Councilman Ding Felder, and this was on July twenty-third, twenty-twenty. As I mentioned earlier in the budget presentation, the, as the presentation unfolded today with Mr. Rojero's office, the F T Es recommended for F Y twenty-one had settled, and we honor and recognize this motion in light of the settlement of those F T Es for their initial presentation. We also know that the budget is a process and we have public hearings, and so we have a journey ahead of us to, to honor the request of council for this specific position request. That said, I would like to, secondly, offer some discussions about deliverable concepts for this position as requested by title as a new employment. When I, and again, I'm, I'm just going to talk experientially for a moment. In thirty years of, of city government, City of Tampa government, I had the fortunate opportunity to teach human diversity and professional government ethics for years as a lead instructor with some of my partners to the city. This is going back twenty, twenty-five years ago. And the three categories that I would hope to see as deliverables on a position like this, and assuming I will get feedback from council and their agreement, or at least amend what I'm offering, is first of all, is recruiting to make sure that we have equal employment opportunity programming for the city that aligns well with our diversified City of Tampa. The second metric that we would look to do is, is training. And I want to point out that the mayor had put a hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars. It wasn't itemized in the, the budget presentation today, I don't believe, but she had put a hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars away for the implicit bias training based on her other discussions in council. And then lastly, the other deliverable is accountability. We have to be accountable to our performance management as it relates to recruiting, training, and our personnel manual. And I believe those three deliverables would make a, a healthy city as it relates to providing the outcomes of a chief diversity officer. So I would like to offer a, a proposal concept. Again, there's time to discuss this between now and, and the adoption of the budget, or adoption of the recommended budget. And I'll let Ms. Austin jump in with me here in a second. But first of all, the city has been discussing for some time now the addition of a, a diversity recruiting officer. And what does that mean? Well, we know that in human resources, one of the jobs, the jobs is to bring new employees onto the city. And we have been looking at expanding that program for some time, and I'll touch on another facet of that in a minute. But specifically, looking at the potential of a diversity recruiter. And so beyond recruiting for the positions that are open, I would like Ms. Austin to talk actually of what that position could possibly do for us if we could find in the upcoming budget proposal. Kelly?
Yes. Good afternoon. As Chief of Staff spoke to, we've been having some conversations from a staffing perspective as to how we could enhance existing employees' employment opportunities for upward or lateral movement as well as going out and improving our recruitment efforts. And what we believe we could do would is forge some partnerships with high schools and vocational schools that have skilled worker programs that coincide with potential City of Tampa employment opportunities and go right to the source where that, that candidate base is to enhance and improve our, our chances to recruit diverse backgrounds for employment opportunities. Also, we'd like to expand our outreach to college and universities or, you know, have the recruiter participate in recruitment events and be able to share information about City of Tampa employment opportunities with diverse student groups on campus to increase our applicant pools. Internally, what we've talked about is, is fostering some formal or informal mentoring relationships within the city to encourage employees from all demographic groups to, to create internal paths to seek, you know, mobility, whether that's lateral or through advancement, but allow better opportunities to move within the city so that you don't necessarily have to leave city employment if you want to have a different career path or upward mobility. So those were some of the recruiting concepts that we have talked about.
Thank you, Ms. Austin. And, and now to talk about the training aspect, I just want to share with council and the public that in Ms. Austin's Department of Human Resources, we have a human resource manager devoted to training who is a diversified staff member. He's been with the city a long time. So he actually touches every employee in Orient that is non-public safety. The public safety has its own onboarding, what we would call holdover training, and they also have their own recruiting opportunities. And for years, they, they've been using these tools, if you will, to help with scholarships for academies, and they monitor the, the opportunities for diversified staff through those mechanisms as well as training. And they monitor the opportunities for diversified staff through those mechanisms as well as training. And again, we're trying to bring all these best practices into the city through these different avenues. But back to the trainer, that is currently in the city as a lead trainer, again, who has a diversified background, has been with the city a long time. And then the other two things that are going on in the organization relate to that accountability item I talked about earlier. One of the concepts that have been socialized internally was to augment our mayor's advisory councils, both the African American Advisory Council and the Hispanic Advisory Council. Ms. Austin made a recommendation that we would create a counterpoint internally of employees to make sure that all diversified employees were actually represented in that council and to give feed towards our accountability within the city as it relates to our data, our recruiting numbers, our training metrics, some of the other services that help us show to the community that we are operating in a manner that's conducive to the way the city has represented itself, especially in current times. And then lastly, I've talked about in earlier in the budget about the third leg of our triangle, which is enterprise performance management. And one of the subcommittees that is run by Ms. Jean Duncan as our administrator is over our efficiency effectiveness and equity. And one of her working groups under equity is diversified staff who are going to be looking at these performance metrics to make sure that we apply equity not only internally to our service delivery, but externally to the public service delivery. And this is going to roll up into the broader enterprise performance management. And then very last is that the mayor has authorized us to look at a program, which she spoke of today in her speech. Not only our pathways sessions to, again, to augment what Ms. Austin said about the recruiting for opportunities in our workplace and other workplace outside the city. But we're also looking at progress opportunities for those employees who want to climb the ladder inside city government and not remain in their initial hire position and give those opportunities. And she spoke about the mentoring, et cetera. But also, we have find that as we're going through the application process for employees, that we find folks that occasionally become disqualified based on background. And we are looking at a program to help bridge that gap between that background, if you will, into a job or into a career with the City of Tampa. And we are working on the methodology as we speak. Again, this is something the mayor has approved us to look at to allow a pathway for somebody to get a job at the city that historically has maybe been disqualified for a background check. So those are the functional deliverables that kind of wrap around the idea of what we would hope that a chief diversity officer would perform, but not necessarily with adding an FTE. We're kind of hopeful that the FTE could go into the actual recruiting process and be able to support our recruitment numbers, as Ms. Austin mentioned. However, we wanted to make sure that we offer this comprehensive feedback to council as they continue to discuss this with the administration. And lastly, I do want to recognize that inside the motion, it was a direct report to the mayor. And we do, just by example, have a chief ethics officer, which is Ms. Kimberly Sullivan. And, you know, looking at the org chart, there is, on those positions that hold that responsibility, there is a dotted line, so to speak, to the top of the administration. And this could be applied the same way. We could identify a chief diversity officer who had a dotted line to the mayor in support of this advisory council that I spoke of as a hybrid between the current advisory groups and an augmented internal advisory group. So I know that's a lot, and I know council is probably going to want to give feedback. So I will pause for a moment for that.
Thank you very much. Do we have any questions or comments at this time from council members? Councilman Goode, we can't hear your voice.
Yeah, how about now? Can you hear me now?
Yeah, yes, sir. Yeah, go ahead, sir.
Well, again, I made this presentation and asked for this council to give me a second to vote on it. And we did that. I like a lot of things that the chief is talking about. And I know we're stringent on budgets, and I understand that. But I'm still looking at, I won't use the word control per se, but making sure we still have a person who will be the head person and is answering directly to the mayor and making sure that these things are being done and not just saying where a person is under HR. I want to make that clear. I don't want that person precisely under HR's control versus that working with HR, but looking at a diverse workforce to where they have a system in place and can have these other systems that the chief is talking about that can be under their control or auspice, but just making sure that that person isn't controlled. They have direct access to the mayor. So that's pretty much my thing as far as it relates to the chief diversity officer. Rather than this in-house or out-house, this person that doesn't have so many bosses or dealing with other people that they have some type of control on where diversity needs to be hit within the City of Tampa. Are you prepared, Mr. Chairman?
Thank you very much. All right, anybody else wish to comment or ask any question? Hearing none. Chief Bennett, any follow-up on Councilmember Goode's comments?
Thank you, Chairman. Thank you, Councilman Goode. I'll take this feedback back to the administration. And again, we will report back to council as the budget process continues. I just want to put out in FTE calculations that we were hopeful to gain administration support for that extra position to do the recruiting and then identify a chief diversity officer within the organization that had all of the functional capabilities that have been discussed from both council and my feedback and still reporting to the mayor on those issues, but without double increasing our FTEs as opposed to one that would be identified for a potential recruiter. But I will take back Councilman Goode's comments and the motion back to the administration and report back through the budget process.
And again, I understand the FTE. And again, if you have that particular person with that FTE that can be elevated, I don't have an issue with that. I just want to make sure we have somebody who has the control to be able to be with the mayor and make these recommendation decisions and be able to move the city. That's just my perspective on it.
Understood. Thank you very much, Councilman. And again, I will work with you directly, and I'll bring back the feedback to council as a whole.
Thank you, sir.
And Mr. Chair, if I may?
Councilman Vera, go ahead.
Thank you. No, I just wanted to thank Councilman Goode for his leadership on this issue. Thank you, Councilman Goode. We appreciate your leadership in bringing this issue forward. We all want, we all believe that prevention on these kinds of issues is very important. And I think that all seven of us agree, well, six, all seven of us agree on this sentiment. And but I just wanted to thank you for your leadership, sir. And I know that we're supportive in one way or another moving this forward, whether it's looking from within, you know, allocating different staff persons, whatever it may be. I know we're all supportive, sir. Just wanted to thank you for your leadership.
Thank you very much. Anybody else? All right, thank you very much, Chief of Staff, John Bennett, for that. We will be moving forward. Item number seventy, where we have a request from the legal department to continue this item for sixty days. So that would put us at October fifteenth. May I have a motion to continue items seventy to October fifteenth?
So moved.
Councilman Goode, second from.
Second.
Second, Councilman Citro. Roll call vote.
Vera.
Yes.
Goode.
Yes.
Carlson.
Yes.
Dingfelder. Citro.
Yes.
Councilmember Miranda.
Miranda, you're muted.
Yes.
Meniscus Galco.
Yes.
Motion carried with Councilmember Dingfelder being abstinent vote.
All right, thank you very much. Item for seventy-one also, a part from the legal department, that we continue this to September seventeenth. May I have a motion of continuing for item number seventy-one?
So moved with the chairman, item seventy-one, twenty twenty-two oh three, to be moved to September seventeenth of year twenty twenty. And what time do they want? Six o'clock?
No, no, just under staff reports.
Okay, under staff reports.
Yes, sir.
Second.
That motion from Councilman Miranda, I heard Councilman Goode's voice early. If we could get a roll call vote.
Vera.
Yes.
Goode.
Yes.
Carlson.
Yes.
Dingfelder. Citro.
Yes.
Miranda.
Yes.
Meniscus Galco.
All right, yes.
Motion carried with Councilmember Dingfelder being abstinent vote.
All right, thank you very much. Item number seventy-two, Vic, Director of Mobility Department, has transmitted a written report. Are there any questions from council members for this item? Item number seventy-two. Is Vic on the line, just in case?
Yes, Chair, I am on the line and ready to answer any question. This is a routine quarterly report that was requested about a year ago, and we've been transmitting it since. It provides an update on our capital program for stormwater, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you very much. Are there any questions at this time for the gentleman? Hearing none, seeing none. This concludes our agenda, where we will now go to informational reports and new business by council members. I will begin with Councilmember Goode. Councilmember Goode, do you have any new business at this time? But before you begin, I'm sorry, sir. Because of the heavy workload, the legal department, the clerk and whatnot, when you make motions, unless it's absolutely urgent, if we could just hold off a little bit, at least through the month of August, because there is, you know, a lot to do converting to virtual and doing this. So if your motion is something that is not, you know, absolutely urgent at this time, if you could just please hold off on stuff. I'm holding off on pretty much everything unless, you know, absolutely necessary. I'll begin, Councilmember Goode, do you have anything on new business?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, for your leadership today and all my council members. You know, there was a historic moment made yesterday in East Tampa. I'd like to thank all of the council members who fought this battle with me from the beginning when we first got on this council, understanding and hearing the voices of the community. You know, people always say, well, you know, you have a council member that's helping out in the district. And I tell people, I urge all of the, all of the help. I thank Mr. Carlson for being a part of this event. You know, it became a battle between sometimes you don't know, the total community don't understand the inner workings. You have this infighting going on, and we had that going on. So I'm glad that the administration behind the scenes is working with me to kind of make some concessions. And we made some concessions to make sure we can bring our community together, especially our seniors. I made a commitment through the campaign trail that we need to get that senior center. That's going to come true now. We need to get Gymnastics, just like New Tampa has it. I've been up there several times and watching those kids up there and watching the facilities. That was something I knew we needed to have in our community because our kids are outside in the heat doing step practice and dancing. They need to be inside where they can be able to do what they need to do. And then again, the Fair Oaks, the renovation. You know, a lot of people don't know that I put a lot of football programs at that program, national championship programs. So I've always had a love for Fair Oaks. So I'm just glad now that the administration was able to give a good concept and talk with me behind closed doors to get this thing bonded, and the community is satisfied. They're happy at this point because they see something that's going to be, again, a historic event in our community to having those type of buildings and that type of success, what I call economic empowerment coming to our community. Outside people coming to see the beauty of what we have now. And I think that'd be a very good economic impact on our community. So again, I say thank you to all the council members who helped me with their votes and their wishes. Are you ready, Mr. Chairman?
Councilman Citro. Councilman Citro.
Mr. Chair, thank you very much. First of all, I would like to, again, congratulate Councilman Goode on his hard work on getting the Fair Oaks up and going. Councilman Goode, you wanted to get this rec center, the community spoke out. Congratulations to you, sir. Mr. Chair, I'd also like to thank city staff, especially the IT department and legal for preparing this type of format with our virtual meeting. I think it came off without a hitch. I'd also ask that I am feeling that Governor DeSantis will not extend his executive order for virtual meetings. So I'm hoping that we can get some sort of commitment from council members soon in case we have to go back to in-person quasi judicial meetings. I feel, again, I feel that Governor DeSantis is not going to go, and people need to be notified, both petitioners and the communities, in the event that we cannot have them. I would like to make one motion very quickly. I move to have the Sustainability and Resiliency Director to present before city council his efforts to promote environmental sustainability efforts by the City of Tampa. And if we could have this on October fifteenth, twenty twenty, and I believe ten a.m. would be appropriate.
All right, we have a motion from Councilman Citro. Do we have a second?
A second.
May I make?
Council attorney Shelby, sorry.
When you have, when you have ten o'clock, does that still stand? That would be after public comment?
That's the reason why I did not say nine, council. But if you would like to direct me on what time you feel would be appropriate?
I don't know. Public comment is first. The question is whether it's a time certain is the question. Council has done that in the past, and what you do is that you stop your.
Number one.
Wherever you are. So it depends whatever you think is appropriate.
Mr. Chair. Then, Mr. Chair, it's your direction.
I mean, if it's someone that I can, if it'll be virtual, still virtual at the time or not, just have that person stand by. We don't know what kind of. Being that public comment is to the beginning of the agenda. I don't see, I mean, time certain or not, you know, let's say we have an hour, hour and a half of public comment. Ten, ten thirty. So either way, I mean, the person would be standing by and is an employee of the City of Tampa, so.
All right, thank you.
We can put it first on the agenda after, after public comment. So either way, it'll be there, so.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Do we have a second?
November twenty-fourth at five oh one.
Councilman Vera, did you second that?
No, I mean, I can't. I hereby do.
You do, all right. Roll call vote.
Vera.
Yes.
Goode.
Yes.
Carlson.
Yes.
Dingfelder. Citro.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair.
You're muted. Councilmember Miranda, you're muted. He's saying yes, we need subtitles.
Is he muted by the administrator?
Can we unmute Councilmember Miranda?
Mr. Chair, I can read lips. He said yes.
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 Yes, there we go.
Meniscus Galco.
Yes.
Motion carried with Councilmember Dingfelder being abstinent vote.
Thank you very much. Anything else, sir? Councilman Citro?
Nothing, thank you very much, Mr. Chair.
Thank you very much. Councilman Miranda, do you have anything for new business?
None, sir, none.
Thank you. Councilman Carlson.
Thank you, Ms. Chair. First, also, congrats to Councilman Goode on the great win for East Tampa. It ended up being bigger and better than any of us thought.
Never mind.
To do. It ended up being bigger and better than we thought, but there's a lot of work left to do to bring equity throughout the city. And so thank you for your leadership. You know, leadership is about bringing disparate audiences together and coming up with solutions. So thank you. The other thing is, we had some people speak out this morning, and we have some people maybe still watching for the first time. And I just want to say to everyone, you know, I've been on this council a year and a half, and some of us have been around for a while, and some are relatively new. And this council, though, as long as I've been here for the last eighteen months, has worked really hard on civil liberties and civil rights and equity issues, economic equity issues and others. And I would just ask anybody watching or anybody spoke out this morning or anybody who's interested in the issues that were discussed, please look at our record over the last year and a half. And if you don't see it, look at our agenda over the next few months, and you'll see that. you'll see that, you know, we put our, we put our thoughts in important places by putting them on the agenda, and the agenda items we have coming up over the next few months are really important issues, addressing the issues that, that the community has expressed concern about. And after looking at the past and looking at the future, if you still want any questions to answer and want to have a discussion, call us, call my office, email me, I'm happy to meet with you. I'm sure my colleagues would be happy to meet with you. We want to have a constructive dialogue to move the community forward, so thank you for that. Also, Chief Bennett, if you're still watching, we can have an offline conversation about this. I looked at the five strategic goals. I wish, all the workforce is there, I wish the economy was there, I wish we had some economic drivers that we could measure, and maybe we can come up with a metrics like Tampa's scorecard outside of the specific goals of the city. City doesn't have control of all the drivers of those economic measures, but I think we have to look at it, because that's what affects our economy, and if we can improve our economy, include, improve the jobs, help entrepreneurs grow their businesses, we improve the situation for everyone. And lastly, I mentioned to you all last week, and then I sent around a resolution that was sent to me by the Friends of Tampa Union Station, and I would appreciate if we could approve that now. Mr. Shelby, what do I need to do? Do I need to read the whole thing, or can I just send this to Suling?
Which motion are you referring to? There was one, there was one that you gave.
The, it's a resolution urging the return of daily train service by Amtrak to Tampa Station as soon as practical, underscoring the importance of Amtrak service to the people of the city of Tampa, providing an effective date.
And that was, and that was previously distributed to city council and the clerk, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. That's appropriate if council is prepared to accept that motion.
Second, I'll second.
All right. We have motion, Councilman Carlson, second, Councilman Vera, roll call vote.
Vera.
Yes.
Goodes.
Yes.
Carlson.
Yes.
Dean Felder. Citro.
Yes.
Miranda. Miranda.
I hear them through the walls.
Okay. I've hit that yes unmute thing three times. I can't help it anymore.
Meniscalco.
Yes.
Motion carried with Councilmember Dean Felder being abstinent vote.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thanks, everybody.
Councilman Vera.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, for running a great meeting. I wanted to join in on with regards to Councilman Goodes and also the support of other members. I know that Councilman Carlson and Councilman Citro has also been involved.
Only is going to be pulled.
With, with Fair Oaks, and just wanted to thank everybody for their hard work, and especially Councilman Carlson and Goodes. You always come in like a wrecking ball. I'm going to nickname you Wrecking Ball, so there you go. I hope that sticks. It's a compliment. And also wanted to echo what Councilman Carlson said, which is that this, this council has moved forward on a lot of important issues. There are very, very people to the community.
Just ask yourself at this time. Oh, then, that's up to Suling to do. She can unmute you. Say, my guest, you need me. Not my guest.
Just last week, we, we began to move on forward on implicit bias training for all city employees is done by an outside entity, something that is very, very big. We passed body cameras, something that's really, really big. We're making changes to the police review board, including them getting their own attorney, additional powers with regards to investigation, et cetera. Moving forward on investments in USF Innovation District, Councilman Carlson's Economic Development Committee, which goes far, a lot of different issues that we've really, really moved forward on in just a year and a half. So I think that's good, and to quote the carpenters, we've only just begun. So I think that's good. I just have two quick motions, if I may. One of them is, I motion for legal to meet with us an apprenticeship ordinance, and the legal department report back to council with an update for said ordinance on, I'll do October 1st.
Thank you.
Of which is two months. Yeah, no, no worries. To give you all some background on this, we have some pretty good rules with regards to encouragement of apprenticeships and CRA. I'd like for city legal to work with some stakeholders. That includes groups like ABC, that includes our numerous labor unions and groups representing working families to come forth with an ordinance. Obviously, the big elephant in the room is the St. Petersburg ordinance, which is right now in Circuit Court in Pinellas County, and obviously, we don't want to run afoul of that, but I still believe that we can. Over the last, we can do well. Over the last six or seven months, I've been meeting with city legal on this issue, as well as meeting separately, in one meeting with, with our friends in the labor movement, as well as individuals from, or one individual, Mr. Kona, a school board member, Kona, with ABC, and I believe that we can move this forward. We have a very troubling economy right now, where people are looking for upward mobility and looking for jobs with dignity, and there's no better way to do that than to encourage apprenticeships. So I'd like, put that forward, if I may, Mr. Chair.
Go ahead. Thank you very much. Vera has a motion with a second from Councilman.
What was the day? I'm sorry, what was?
October 1st.
October 1st.
We have a second from Councilman Citro, roll call vote.
Vera.
Yes.
Goodes.
Yes.
Carlson.
Yes.
Dean Felder. Citro.
Yes.
Miranda.
Yes.
Meniscalco.
Yes.
Motion carried with Councilmember Dean Felder being abstinent vote.
And?
Councilman Vera, you have a second?
Just very quick, if I may. I motion for staff to pursue renaming the Perio and Albany Park in Forest Hills, which is nearly named Perio and Albany, because those are the streets that it's on, there's no special unique purpose, to the historic Forest Hills Park, the Historic Forest Hills Neighborhood Association. I've been working with them on a number of issues. They're a relatively new neighborhood association, very hardworking people, and they'd like to see that. I further move that staff report back to us on September 3rd, 2020, on the name change. So long as there are minimums to it, or written, and it can go forward, a written report is fine. I don't want any time additionally. If they're not a minimal, then I'd like to hear why, but if they are, a written report is fine.
We have a motion from Councilman Vera. Do we have a second? Second from Councilman Miranda, roll call vote.
Vera.
Yes.
Goodes.
Yes.
Carlson.
Yes.
Dean Felder. Citro.
Yes.
Miranda.
Yes.
Meniscalco.
Yes.
Motion carried with Councilmember Dean Felder being abstinent vote.
And if I may, one small thing, Mr. Chair, I apologize. I know everybody to get off to a late lunch. I also just wanted to make the important investment that this budget makes in disability issues. I know as part of the East Tampa Parks Program, there's going to be an inclusive neighborhood park, which is wonderful, so Councilman Goodes, congratulations on that, and we're finally going to see movement on the new Tampa Autism Sensory Friendly Park, and that's, that's a big deal. So it's really important that we continue the work of our autism sensory friendly program and expand it to people with all disabilities. So I just wanted to make a note on that and salute the administration for working with us all on that. Nothing further, sir.
Thank you very much. That leaves me. Councilmember Goodes, it's, it's been said by our colleagues here on the board, congratulations, that's a huge achievement for your district, one district that you have been fighting for since before you got elected, and you are, you are known and respected in the community as one who fights, and here on, as a board member, you are one that gets things done, and we are happy to see your success, and we, we, we're happy to see the success of your district, a district that needs so much, and you are getting things done. Just a couple of items. First, Addison Davis, the school, Hillsborough County School Superintendent would like to speak, I'd like to invite him here, August 20th, for a 10-minute report regarding the reopening of schools. If you talk to people in the community, if you hear what they say, a lot of folks think that city council has something to do with dictating if schools open or not, there's confusion with that. There's people that have opinions whether it's safe or not, considering the COVID situation. So I would like to invite the school superintendent, August 20th, right after public comment, to do a 10-minute report and just give an update, just to offer clarification and whatnot. So I have to end the gavel here, too. Chair pro tem, Citro.
You've heard a motion made by Councilman Meniscalco. Is there a second? Seconded by Councilman Goodes. All in favor, roll call.
Vera.
Yes.
Goodes.
Yes.
Carlson.
Yes.
Dean Felder. Citro.
Yes.
Miranda.
Yes.
Meniscalco.
Yes.
Motion carried with Councilmember Dean Felder being abstinent vote.
Thank you very much. Also, I would like to just remind folks that Monday, this Monday, I believe it's August 10th, from 9:00 a.m. to 11:00 a.m., we're going to have a virtual meeting for the departmental briefings, two hours, of course, by the chief of staff to get those done. Just a reminder, there's no motion needed, and of course, today is the 55th anniversary of the signing by President Johnson of the Voting Rights Act. I know Councilmember Vera is a, is a historian and big fan, and being that early voting has begun and the discussion on mail-in ballots and whatnot, and everything happening, it's a big election year, this is, of course, significant, and with the civil rights movement of the 1960s, which really continues today in a different way, but the civil rights movement really marches on, and I echo what Councilman Carlson said, in looking at what this board has done or tried to do or achieved since we started this term together, and of course, you know, we like to discuss a lot of the very important issues. Having said that, I'd like to pass it on to Mr. Shelby, who would like to discuss an item.
Yes. Mr. Chairman, I'd like to raise for council the item that's on your addendum, a walk-on that I'm requesting. It's a resolution that is a modification to the emergency rules for communication media technology meetings, and that's to address the resumption of quasi-judicial hearings that are going to begin going virtual tonight at the 6:00 p.m. meeting. So this is a step in that direction, and it's also a step in addressing the concerns raised by Councilman Citro with regard to the governor's executive order. So with that, I've distributed to council, hopefully you've seen it, and I'd ask the council in preparation for tonight, move that resolution.
All right. We have this resolution that needs to be moved per request of Mr. Shelby. Do we have a motion to move this resolution?
So moved.
We have a motion from Councilman Citro. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second from Councilmember Goodes, roll call vote.
Vera.
Yes.
Goodes.
Yes.
Carlson.
Yes.
Dean Felder. Citro.
Yes.
Miranda.
Yes.